No, I appreciate the feedback on the flex schedule because I know that's something that's new for you guys. So I know all of us were curious on what the students were saying. So number one, thank you for being here and representing the student base. And it is a big responsibility, so don't be afraid to bring anything up that you're hearing.
Perfect, perfect.
Well, obviously now you come prepared, but you speak from the heart too at the same time. So great, great job today. We learned a lot.
Thank you.
If you need to take off, you will certainly can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
For discussion of the board's agenda.
Any questions? It is a motion item.
Soul moved, second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, if they name, motion passes six zero. We'll move on to citizens comments. We didn't have any citizens comments tonight. Next, we will have our student representatives Samantha Richardson and Brady Bergstrom. This is Brady's first night, so he's going to tell us a little bit about himself.
Hi guys, I'm Brady. And sorry I couldn't be here last meeting, but a couple of things I enjoy are hockey and golf. And yeah, I'm happy to be here.
Yeah, so last time I was here, I kind of talked about what was on the agenda for homecoming week. Now I'm going to tell you guys kind of like what the turnout was and how it was a very successful school spirited week we had. Two of the things that happened on Tuesday and Thursday were our Ironman team. We had a group of students get together and play volleyball with each other. And then the winning team actually got to play the teachers, which Ms. Hanson was on that team. It was very impressive. And then I was a part of student or I'm on student council, so I kind of got to be involved with all the planning for homecoming week and kind of see it through. And another thing that I was a part of is I was actually on the homecoming committee or on the homecoming court. So I got to be a part of going to some of the other schools there. I got to go to, it was Eastview, Pinewood, and then Little Mountain. And also the middle school, I got to kind of talk to some of the students there and hang out with them for lunch. It was a lot of fun. I think the students enjoyed it and it was fun to see the energy involved and then also throughout the school week too. When we had those Ironman games and all that stuff. And then another thing to highlight is the football game. Football game on Friday was a very big turnout. I was up there doing the little red wagon chant in the football stadium with all the kids. It was a lot of fun. And during the halftime show, we actually had our unified kids go out and do the pass, kick, and punt. And that was a lot of fun. We got to cheer for Logan Sinclair. He's a cool guy. Kind of got to do a little Logan chant, get him all riled up for it. And then that following Saturday, we had our dance, which was actually the biggest turnout we've ever had in school history. We sold a lot of tickets, had a lot of fun. And I don't know if any of you guys know Thor Lemke, but he was our DJ and he did a very well job. I had a lot of compliments after the dance from kids and teachers saying that a lot of people had a lot of fun and that. Also, we learned a lot for next year for homecoming and what we can do to improve it and see different results with it. So yeah, that was kind of a recap of our homecoming week.
Yeah, and just to touch on homecoming, I thought the whole week was super fun. And yeah, I thought it went really well. All right, now I'll be talking a little bit about flex. And flex is brand new to the high school this year. So basically what it is, is a 30-minute time period twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Where students have the opportunity to go meet with any teacher that they want or need help in any subject with. So the purpose is for students to like, if they need to retake a test, they can go see that teacher and get that done. How do you sign up? You just go to Infinite Campus and there's, you can select any teacher that you want that's available during that time period on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And you just click submit and then you're in for that day. And what's cool about it is you can, you can go to a different teacher every, every week if you want. And you can change things up so you don't have to stay with the same teacher like we have, like we've done in the past. And I think some of the benefits, I think, I think everybody that I've talked to so far has thought that it's been a positive thing for the school. It is only our second week of it, but I think it's going really well so far. And I'll be talking a little bit about the senior class meeting. So we have meetings once a month for all the seniors. We just get together in the auditorium and talk about, you know, what's going on in our school. What we need to know to help lead the school and everything like that. We've talked about like college applications, applying for colleges. Parchment, so you can get your transcript and things like that. And then every senior has an upcoming one-on-one meeting with their counselor. So that's really important. And so far, I've already had my meeting and it lasted about 10 to 15 minutes. And we talked about kind of my future and what my plans are after high school. And I thought it was really beneficial.
Yeah, and then also just to touch on that flex time too. It's been really cool for me at least because I'm a very, I like having time management in my schedule. And with the flex times on Tuesday and Thursday, I can go get that help from my teachers. Like for example, I had a paper that I just turned in and I got to go talk with my English teacher and kind of talk things over on maybe some things I can change or how it can flow better. So I think it is a big help for all the students in the high school. So then to talk about something exciting that I'm also a part of for student council and that's available for other student groups in the high school. Is our newly opened coffee shop. So this coffee shop we opened on Main Street. It's open during the beginning of school, so from seven to seven thirty. And we have the student groups kind of in there involved and making all the coffee. So I was in there for student council. It's a big hit. We have a lot of freshmen that come up and get their coffee in the morning. And a lot of other students kind of come in and say hi and all that stuff. So I think that's a positive thing for our school. And then also another thing we decided to bring back is Friday morning music. It kind of uplifts the vibes in the school and I think it's a really good start to the Friday and ending the week. So thank you guys.
It's Friday morning music.
So in the morning, we play music before school starts. It's about like seven twenty-five or seven twenty, we put on the music. And then when kids are walking in, it's just kind of playing up over the speakers. Yeah. Any questions?
Any other questions?
No, I appreciate the feedback on the flex schedule because I know that's something that's new for you guys. So I know all of us were curious on what the students were saying. So number one, thank you for being here and representing the student base. And it is a big responsibility, so don't be afraid to bring anything up that you're hearing.
Perfect, perfect.
Well, obviously now you come prepared, but you speak from the heart too at the same time. So great, great job today. We learned a lot.
Thank you.
If you need to take off, you will certainly can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Board, discuss the body and the consent. Any questions? It is a motion or an action item?
Soul moved, second.
Motion made by, seconded by Jennifer to present the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name passes six. Collaborative connection, gifts that we received.
Yeah, once again, it just showcases their made support. Today, we get to bring two donations to the magic closet. And magic closet is just a concept of giving what they need, especially when it's some necessity items. So if someone needs a personal care item or things that the school, school supplies, they have, there's spots in our schools where they have access to those. And Soul Lions, American Legion gave significant amounts, five thousand for the Lions, three thousand five hundred for the American Legion. To our social workers in each building to be able to help students in need.
Awesome, Mrs. This is a resolution.
Therefore, be resolved by the Monticello School District, number eight eight two, to gratefully accept the following donations. Monticello Lions, the amount of five thousand dollars for the magic closet. And from the American Legion, the amount of three thousand five hundred for the magic closet.
Second.
Resolution made by Jennifer, seconded by Melissa, to approve the acceptance of gifts from Monticello Lions for five thousand dollars in the magic closet. And the American Legion for three thousand five hundred dollars for the magic closet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, day, motion passes six zero. And once again, I think I've been on the board 13 years and I don't think we've ever had a week where, or a school, for me, where we've not had donations from our community. And it ranges from all kinds of things, so it's amazing how much we give back to the district to help with different items, so. Very awesome. Next, innovation leadership. We have a special group of individuals here today. And so we'd like to recognize them. It's Superintendent Olson. Go ahead and cheer.
Stand in front of the podium and one at a time, we're going to have each one of them introduce themselves. About their background. The school that they have for Monticello. We're really fortunate. We have our largest class of students in the world. They just are diving into ourselves, really adding something beautiful to the culture. So thank you for being here. And why don't you just, if you could, run forward and introduce yourself and cheer.
So hi, my name is Ainoa and I come from Spain. And yeah, I'm happy to be here in Monticello High School. This is a huge opportunity to us to improve our English and also to learn about another culture. So yeah, thank you very much.
Good night, everyone. My name is Pedro Correa. I'm sixteen and I'm from Brazil in a city called Belo Horizonte. It's around five million, four million inhabitants. So it's very different being here in a small city, new culture, new language. And it's been a pleasure staying here in Monticello with Tapper's House. And since I've came here, I played for Monticello soccer team. And our season ended last weekend and we lost for sections. And this exchange here for me is going to be a great experience for new culture, new language, and new people for networking for all my, all my life. Thank you.
Well, my name is Claudia. I'm fifteen and I'm from Spain, like Ainoa. I'm really proud of being here and learning about your culture because I'm always really like your culture and your language and everything. And it's always been a dream to be here and I can relive that right now. I live in it. So yeah, I'm relieved for everything. I really like Monticello. I played in tennis team and next season I'm, I really want to play in basketball team. So I'm really thankful for, could live this experience that has always been my dream, so.
Hello, my name is Julie. I'm from Germany and I'm fifteen years old. I appreciate it to be here and stay here for ten months. I've always wanted to experience the high school spirit. In one week, I want to join the dance team because I've danced since I was a little kid. And I'm really thankful to be here and to take the opportunity. And yes, I am excited to meet new people, improve my English, and yes.
Hi, I'm Angela. I'm from Spain, from Madrid. It's the capital. And I have, I'm fifteen years old, so I'm a little bit nervous. I'm in the indirect club. And last Friday, we have do like the all inventory school dance. And it was so funny because I was hopping with concession and everybody was going crazy. So I'm living this experience and I'm liking it. I'm a little bit sad because I wanted to join the basketball team, but I live in Rogers. So I can't go like every day to the, to the training and all that stuff, so I can't join it. But I am, I'm living a good experience and I like it so much.
Hi, I'm Paula. I'm sixteen years old and I'm also from Spain. And I also wanted to thank you, everybody, to letting us live this experience. We are going to leave it, we are going to leave it as much as we can. And yes, see what's going on and excited to see what happens.
Hi, I'm Melena. I'm from Italy, a very small town near Milan, Cremona, probably.
Good night, everyone. My name is Pedro Correa. I'm sixteen and I'm from Brazil, in a city called Belo Horizonte. It's around five mil, four million inhabitants. So, uh, it's very different being here in a, in a, in a small city. Uh, new culture, new language. And it's been a pleasure staying here in Monticello with Tapper's House. And, uh, since I've came here, I played for Monticello Soccer Team. And our season ended last weekend and we lost for sections. And this exchange year for me is gonna be a great experience for new culture, new language, and new people for networking for all my, all my life. Thank you.
Well, um, my name is Claudia, I'm fifteen and I'm from Spain, like Ainoa. I'm really proud of being here and learning about your culture because I'm always really like your culture and your language and everything. And it's, has always been a dream to be here and I can really that right now. I live in it. So yeah, I'm relieved for everything. I really like Monticello. I played in tennis team and next season I'm, I really want to play in basketball team. So I'm really thankful for could live this experience that has always been my dream, so.
Hello, my name is Julie, I'm from Germany and I'm fifteen years old. Um, I appreciate it to be here and stay here for ten months. I've always wanted to experience the high school spirit. Um, in one week, I want to join the dance team because I've danced since I was a little kid. Um, and I'm really thankful to be here and to take the opportunity. Um, and yes, I am excited to meet new people, improve my English and, uh, yes.
Hi, I'm Angela, I'm from Spain, from Madrid, it's the capital. And I have, I'm sixteen, um, fifteen years old, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. Uh, I'm in the indirect club. And last Friday, we have do like, uh, the Olivieri's Cold Dance. And it was so funny because I was hopping with concession and everybody was going crazy. So I'm living this experience and I'm liking it. Uh, I'm a little bit sad because I wanted to join the basketball team, but I live in Rogers, so I can't go like every day to the, um, to the training and all that stuff. So I can't join it. But I have, I'm living a good experience and I like it so much.
Hi, I'm Paula, I'm sixteen years old and I'm also from Spain. And I also wanted to thank you, everybody, to letting us live this experience. We are going to leave it, we are going to, eh, live it as much as we can. And yes, see what's going on and excited to see what happens.
Hi, I'm Melena, I'm from Italy, a very small town near Milan. Cremona, probably known as it, but okay. Um, uh, when I came here, I joined the tennis team. It was my first time ever playing tennis, it was such a good experience. And next week, I'm going to join the dance team. So excited, it's not my first time and I hope I'm gonna have a lot of fun. Uh, I'm really happy to be here, to live this experience because it's also my dream. So I really hope I can get a lot out of this year. So thank you so much.
We'll give just a photo of you and, um.
Buddy, is there, are we missing one or two?
Yeah, we've, uh, we, we do have a couple that weren't, um, here. So we'll make sure, um, that we connect with them differently, so.
Are you cold yet?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be a hard time.
Yes. I hope you all have a coat.
I don't have any, this type of cold in Brazil.
I'm prepared, yes.
Boots, you need boots.
It'll get better.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Very happy to have you guys.
Yeah, welcome.
Much braver than I was when I was fifteen.
Yeah.
Hey, we will move on to, we have a board calendar adjustment, uh, with a couple of meetings. So Clay, you wanna walk through that?
Yeah, good evening. Uh, I got a few quick hitters here. The, the first one is largely a public service announcement. We don't need to make an action, um, on it, but we will be moving our November seventh work session to November fourteenth, um, as the board is aware, to, um, combine it with the Monticello City Council, um, and do a joint work session, um, at the Monticello Community Center. We, um, I don't believe have a specific start time set yet, but we will obviously post it, um, on our website as soon as we have all of the final details arranged with the city. Um, but just wanted to let the public know tonight that that November seventh date will be moved to November fourteenth, um, to create that joint meeting with, uh, the city council. Move on to, uh, which brings us to the twenty-twenty-three board calendar, um, is an action item. At this time, we are looking to schedule the first six months of the two thousand twenty-three calendar year. Um, moving forward with the, the same format that we have started to follow the last few months here with special meetings and work sessions held on the first Monday of a month with regular meetings held on the third Monday. Uh, as you'll see on the calendar, there's a couple of dates where things needed to be around a bit to accommodate for holidays, um, New Year's Day and then President's Day, um, January and February. It caused a couple of meetings to be moved, but otherwise it follows the traditional first and third schedule.
Is an action item to approve the, as presented by Clay.
I move that we accept the new schedule as presented by Clay.
Second.
To accept the board meeting schedule as presented by Clay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can pass as six.
Awesome. Lastly, I'm here on behalf of, uh, Mr. Revening, our activities director, to present the Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, which as you mentioned, Chair Hagley was a late addition to the agenda. Um, the Minnesota State High School League Foundation needs this form or to prove by the end of October. And essentially what it does is it states that the district will, um, participate in a funding program that provides the district with dollars back to the general fund based on a number of free and reduced students that are enrolled in activities at Monticello High School. Um, Mr. Revening estimates that participating in this program generally generates between five hundred and a thousand dollars for the district annually.
I move that we accept Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League for reimbursement.
Second.
High School League, seconded by Melissa, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Uh, teaching and learning, Monticello High School. They're kind of introducing this to us today, kind of walking through their thoughts and what they think about some of the courses. And then bring it back, the board meeting, work session.
It's awesome. So thank you for having us. Yeah, I'll introduce myself, I'm Matt Colwell. I grew up in a small town of Hackensack and one of the principals. But these guys introduced themselves too.
Not quite like four point five million.
Uh, if we're introduced, I'm Lori Hanson, I'm from a small town west of here, uh, Wilmer, which is much bigger than Hackensack. I'll introduce Allison Post.
I'm also from a small town and don't feel bad, make, you know, feel bad, but I'm from Rockford, which is just right over there. And this is my first year teaching, I've been here for two months and now I'm before the board.
Uh, I'm James Porth, I'm from a town you may not have heard of, it's Becker, this next town. Um, graduated in twenty-eleven and this is my third year here teaching at Monticello now.
So we're excited to have Allison and James here just to talk a little bit about some proposals, classes that we'd like to be able to get to a spot where we can offer our students. We are working, are currently digging in pretty heavily to registration for next year already, students. That's gonna be in front of them pretty quickly, next month or so, um, using a twenty-two, twenty-three version of our course catalog. Uh, some of the work that we've been doing here the last year or so, Lori's got a year up on me, so two years for her, is just to evaluate all the opportunities we can offer our kids, all the courses we can offer, maybe some gaps or holes that we might have in our programming as we set up students to go in any different direction they wanna go. Um, you know, obviously we're not just talking college, we're not just talking four-year, we're talking all of it. And we feel like we have a, an opportunity here to offer a few more things we haven't been able to in the past and make ourselves better and do that to the students. So we'll talk about these classes again, just as a, maybe a proposal. We, we're ready to move on them if we can, when the time comes, after you have some time to consider it. Uh, but we'll, our teachers kind of walk through what the courses will be and, and take any questions. And I know Lori's gonna talk a little bit about our, our pathways, I'll advance the next slide.
And I think just a reminder where we've been over the last couple of years, you've heard that language about pathways and, and as Matt alluded, um, it's really setting up our students, eight-twelve, I think we used to get into this nine-twelve. We're looking at a holistic approach, eight-twelve, what are we doing for them? What do we, um, what pathways are we opening up so that when students leave our, uh, high school after four years, have we given them enough opportunities, skill set, um, in this career pathway wheel to launch themselves into whatever that looks like, uh, as they walk out of there? So if it's a two-year tech school, if it's trades, if it's workforce, if it's a four-year school and if it's military, really we want to have, um, a Plan A, a Plan A and a Plan A. But within that, how can they pivot and, and kind of figure out who they are turning in to be, um, after their graduation date here? So as, as we are doing some work and digging and Matt's got the twenty-two, twenty-three version of our, um, course catalog, you saw that a year ago, we're coming back to that and adding next layer. So doing more intentional alignment. When you come in and when you're looking at this as an eighth grader, ninth grader, tenth grader, where do you see yourself? And you don't have to have those answers, but we're making sure that we have the tools and the resources and we're asking the right kind of questions to get students set up to launch in some aspect of that. And that's the, that's the fun programming, that's the conversations you heard Brady talk about with his school counselor. That's the two career coordinators that we have this year via grants that are really doing this holistic program analysis, but really drilling it down to, how are we serving our students very well and are we preparing them? And as you'll hear both James and Allison talk to tonight, we've got three courses here that we want to, um, bring to the table for consideration because it hits a number of different student avenues. Um, on one hand, you'll hear that career, uh, CTE, that career tech education. We, we really wanna hit, um, and serve that student well. But on the other hand, Allison's gonna talk about a U, AP US government class that serves a very different student population in our high school. So really trying to be diverse in our offerings and make sure that we have enough in our repository that it serves a number of purposes. Are we, are we setting kids up for that Minnesota career fields clusters pathways? And that's really the foundation of the work that we're doing. Um, but within that, are we giving, um, enough within our high school as we partner with colleges, uh, right tech, our community, our workforce? Um, making sure that we're very mindful of preserving or developing those relationships because at the end of the day, um, do we give kids what they need once they walk across their stage? That, that they are prepared for the world beyond high school. Um, and I think Matt, and I can pause right there. Any questions before we get, just within career pathways? We're, we're, I should back up and say we're starting our registration process earlier because we wanna align it to kind of the district's big, um, bigger timeline. We want to make sure that we know where we're at so that in, um, January, February, when we're looking at the bigger district decisions, we have our things in place and that we can provide updated, accurate information. And that we are moving this process earlier for students because we wanna be able to have that kind of conversation. And we feel like we're a little late to the game. We're realizing we're a little late to the game and giving kids some of, asking them some of those tough questions, um, where they are as a person, what's their interest, what's their passion? How do we turn that into a pathway beyond the high school? So that's why we're moving all of this up, we're just gonna continue to adjust and slide up this registration process because we find that we're at the end of the school year and we're a little bit late in how we prepare.
Yeah, it used to be done every March.
Yep.
Now we're talking more November. Just giving that advantage of the district with the planning as well.
So there's a lot of plates in the air right now that's going on with our career registration, our course catalog. Uh, this is one aspect of it that we want to bring you, number one, get you informed, keep you apprised of what we're doing, but also feel like we've got some good options for our students. I think I'll let James and Matt start with the first couple.
Gavin, if you wanna go to the next slide. The first course we're, um, looking to offer is something called Visual Communications. We have offered for a number of years, um, a class called DVP. And that class, we're gonna rebrand next year as Visual Communications One. And so this, and that's always been six sections, uh, pretty well attended.
Uh, yeah, so last year I had seven sections of DVP and then this year it's six with all rough, right around thirty students per section. So it's.
Pretty good, um, interest. And we feel like there would be a pretty good, um, possibility and there will be students for sure who will wanna take their DVP or Visual Communications One and go further with it, which is why we feel like this would be a good fit. And we have a teacher who's very passionate about it. And so we wanna make sure we are meeting that niche of these students who would fit in there. So we'll let James kind of walk through what this class would be, got a couple of slides and we can pause and take any questions.
Um, yeah, so I'm, again, James, um, in the tech ed department or industrial tech. DVP, you're switching into Visual Communications. The purpose for that, um, is to make the course more aligned to industry standards and industry, industry practices. Uh, the department, department chair Cory Derby, he always talks to me and says how he wants his classes to reflect industry standard. He doesn't want kids to take his class and go off to the industry and have it be sloppy work. That he wants them to establish their work ethic within his class. So that's kind of the purpose for the name change. Again, with Visual Communications Two and adding that though, um, the purpose for it is, I can't necessarily give students all the skills that they need to be successful in Visual Communications in the one semester that I have with them. So it's a great introductory course to Photoshop and video editing and things like that, which is what we focus on. And but by giving them the second course of it, we'll be able to dive a lot further into that, that content and those tools that they can really establish their skills and dig deeper in their skills. Similar class, not similar classes, but classes that also touch on elements that I teach, um, also only have one section of it. So it's my DVP, Communications One. Uh, there's Digital Arts and Multimedia Class are the only three classes that I'm aware of in high school that focus into Visual Communications. Uh, so this Visual Communications Two would be a pathway for students to, that are interested in the, in the career field, to enhance their skills, go further with their skills, um, just learning more, more about it, I guess.
Gavin, if you want to go to the next one, so that's, yeah, you're good there. So just thinking about, um, one of the big unknowns is just that machines.
Um, yeah, so a big element of what this class would be is I'm, it's in, kind of in the works uh, to get what's called sublimation printer, um, which is just a printer that has a heat transferable ink, um, where you could then create an image, graphic design an image. Um, and then you could heat press that onto like a shirt or sweatshirt or a coffee mug or a thermos. Um, and with that, the Visual Communications Two class would also kind of be an entrepreneurship type of based class where we would take jobs, various jobs from the school. If the track team wants shirts printed for the Big Daddy, um, practice that they have every year, it's an annual thing. And then they could give us kind of their, what they want. And then the students could design that Big Daddy T-shirt for the track practice. Um, and then we could print it there, right, all right in the classroom. Or we had mentioned for the school store, um, kind of creating a merchandise line for the school store through the class where the students are designing what is being sold and kind of marketing it around the school, um, different things like that. So that equipment, um, to get up and running, it's about three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars. What I, my dream list though is about two grand more than the essential, what we need to get started. Like I said, we have some requests, answer different things like that. Um, but other than that, there wouldn't need to be a student fee applied to the course. Uh, students would, as they make a product or wanna make something, uh, they would just pay for the materials upfront at their own discretion. So if some, one student could pay me thirty dollars throughout the semester and one could pay me a dollar, depending on what it is that they wanna print. Um, and then tentatively, I think, uh, for curriculum and kind of, um, you know, creating the curriculum for the, for the course, I think I would need roughly two days, um, to put that together in, in time. All right, do you have any questions for course or course description?
One question. Um, would the students be able to have a break if, between taking Visual Communications One to, or must they take them back to back in the same school year?
Um, yeah, it's a good question. Uh, so yeah, so they could take it whenever. Um, so they could take Visual Communications One as a freshman and as long as they have that on their transcript that they took it, they could take it as a senior. Um, so it'd be, if, in that gap though, there would be some refreshing of, of skill and memory, um, with the pro, the programs. Um, but yes, and the class would be.
They don't have to fit to this for one year, they could.
Yeah, so they'd take, take it when they want. So if they wanted to do all those, kind of basic lower level, the, uh, Digital Art, TV, or Visual Communications One, then multimedia and then come to Visual Communications Two. Um, just depends on the student's interest and how they configure there.
Do you have a, um, a, a, estimated number of students that you would have to have for the course to go or not go?
Um.
We, we, we had.
I don't know.
We estimated, so we need six sections, you know, twenty-five or thirty students per section. We, uh, conservatively estimated, we could run with one to two sections.
Yeah.
It would be a class in that whole department that we could, you know, bring back to the surface every other semester, every semester depending on interest. Um, we'd like to do it more, you know, if we put that kind of money into equipment and the training, get the momentum going with that many students in Communications One, we'd like to be able to offer pretty frequently. I don't think we'd get six sections out of it, obviously we would want to do that, but.
Right.
Um, one to two start.
I think that's a great question that probably applies to all three classes. As much as we would love to stand and say that we have enough, our job here is to, to balance it all. So how do we market, how do we promote it, how do we align it within a pathway? So kids see it as, any of these classes as part of their, um, their future. And so I think that's our job to do that. And that's one of the goals that we have is so that kids truly say like, if I see this class or if I see AP US Gov, where does it fit in my large scope of it? Um, you know, best case scenario that we have enough interest that we could offer it, uh, every semester. The reality is that some of these we might have to really do an audit and be very mindful when we are making our yearly schedule. Is it an every year class or is it an every other year class to generate the revenue and make, or generate the interest to make sure we have enough to support it? So I think that's where Matt and I come in to say, if it's in our repository of class offerings, then we're working with the individual departments to make sure we've got the student interest to get it in place and get it up.
Just like you do with other classes.
Just exactly like we do, yep. It, it's nice and you'll hear, I think, Allison talk a little bit about that, um, from the social studies department. Just looking at some of the offerings that we have and make sure that we're staying current with them. I think that statement applies to a lot of things. Yeah.
So if a student already, sorry, Jane, start, um, already took DVP, that's considered like Visual Communications One and they would just be able to take two?
Yes, correct. So yeah, DVP to Visual Communication Ones, same course, different name.
Um, so I have a quick question, what are the maintenance and ongoing costs for that machine?
Um, that's a good question. Um, ongoing costs would just be the ink cartridges for it and then the materials, which if we're selling it to the school store or various organizations, they would pay for that upfront. selling it to the school store or various organizations, they would pay for that upfront. So it wouldn't be a recurring bill in the Tech Ed Department, it would be kind of funding itself. And then with that, I think the fees that we generate for selling that merchandise would go to pay a maintenance or replacing the parts. It's just the initial startup cost of getting started. And then from there, I foresee it being kind of a self-managing system.
And it sounds like you guys have some creative ways too, to raise the money for that as well as kind of what I was hearing. Is that correct?
We're pursuing a couple of different avenues there, yeah. Not, the go-to is not going to be just the general fund or the supply budget at high school. We just don't have the money for that at this point. We could supplement a little bit, right, and stretch ourselves, but we do feel like we want to pursue other opportunities and funding possibilities first. We do have a few contacts out and just kind of waiting to see how that pans out.
I have one more question. When it comes to supplying the school store, I think it's a great idea and it could bring in some revenue for the school, which is awesome. But do you have the manpower even within that class to be able to create the products to supply the school store?
Another good question. That's, I don't know if that's how well of an, I can answer that until we're up and running and how, to see what that enrollment is. But if it were to be a year long, have a semester each, or a section each semester, I think knowing that and depending on how many other of the little side projects we take on, if we're focusing solely on the school store, focusing on all these other ones, it'd just be kind of dependent, I guess. I don't know if that answers.
Yeah, no, I mean, so currently the school store, right, is kind of our coffee shop right now. That's going to evolve over time and we're going to be able to put more in there. Right now, if we wanted to put coffee mugs or lanyards or T-shirts in there, we're calling OSCO or, you know, Jason Kissner. Somebody's making money and it's not us. And so one way to look at doing that is to start small, build and grow inside that school store with whatever we can supply it with, depending on how much. And if our kids are making it, you would think their friends and the community and parents and people would be excited about it. So we don't have all those numbers sorted out yet, just with how aggressive we can be with selling it, but we feel like we would have a spot for it. And right now, we've got certain activities and groups that are Manning the school store, students are. And a portion of the proceeds is going back to their budget, you know, with their activities. So Student Council's been in there, DECA's been in there, different athletics teams are going in there to help us sell coffee in the morning. It's kind of fun, they enjoy it. It adds a little, kind of a light start to our day and hot chocolate so far is the number one seller.
And I imagine they'd be interested in helping with the manpower piece of it too, to create.
And kind of going off that, I just, light bulb went on. The sublimation, that, it's a pretty quick turnaround. So you print your image and then you lay it on your shirt or mug or whatever. It maybe takes a minute or two to get it square, but the actual heat transfer is like 80 seconds or under. So you could have students kind of in assembly line fashion for it and maybe make 40 products within a 15-minute class period or whatever you're making or creating, I guess.
Doesn't take a lot of imagination to think about, like our Community Ed Department has many different groups and things. I mean, there, there could be, just like we have revenue from renting out our stadiums and various other programs, this could be a small cottage business. It could grow over time. I agree.
It's a great example of the big city opportunity, but the small town feel. I went to Mr. Polworth's department last year for the retirement gifts of the Shakooti Board and Mr. Derby does. So it's those personal things that you can do to show that collective efficacy. That just really, it gives the school its heart and I think that's what you guys are doing. It's pretty, pretty cool.
Okay, we'll keep rolling. We got a couple more we're excited about as well. Gavin, if you want to go to the next slide. This one's especially exciting, I think, just because I know there's interest. There's a, a number of students that would be very interested in this class in the high school. I feel like we can pull it off and meet a unique niche for students that aren't necessarily going to end up at Wright Tech. I know that's a real question that we have is we want to preserve that relationship and work with them, not be in real difficult competitive terms with our students, but also protect the students that we have in regards to what we can offer them and meet their, their needs. So I'll let you kind of talk through this one, James, but this one is really exciting as well.
Yeah, so this second proposal for me is Introduction to Construction Technology. I got the idea from my high school Becker. They have this class that I'm trying to establish here. And the main goal or objective of that class is in the end, the students build utility sheds or garden sheds with smaller projects leading up to that. And I have a pretty strong connection with the teacher over there that still teaches it, so he's a great resource for me and I've kind of picked his brain a little bit. So logistically, the, the class would be for next, not this spring, but the next spring of next school year. And it would have to be offered in the spring due to weather, because we don't want to build sheds in November and December. And then, so yeah, we, throughout the class, we'd kind of go through basic building construction, building terminology and kind of codes and different like that, just different practices within building. That would be more so classroom setting, because we'd have the capability to go out and sheet rock and do electrical and all that different stuff. So that'd be more like discussion based and small application. A big application would be the utility sheds or garden sheds or even high-end dog houses or playhouses, different things like that. We could get as creative as we want with it. But it's, we're targeting 11th and 12th graders, like Mr. Colwell had mentioned. We have, I don't know how many students that go to Wright Tech, but this class is focused on the students that don't commit to Wright Tech but still want that opportunity to learn how to frame a wall or how to shingle a roof or different things like that. We're giving them that opportunity on our campus, along with their six other classes that they have. They don't have to leave for the second half of the day to take that on. Then kind of with that also, is if there's a student that's kind of on the fence of, oh, I do want to go to Wright Tech to pursue construction or do I not want to? They could take this class and then they could be like, no, that's not for me. Or, yeah, I, I want to go to Wright Tech next year because of that class.
If we pause right there, at the high school, we've got a Woodcraft class, which is for beginner beginners. Ninth graders can take that on up. And that's just generally a really basic understanding of tools and.
Shop safety.
Top safety. And then there's a woodworking class, Woodworking One, which is a cut-up from that, which offers still pretty basic stuff, but they're making shelves, I think, in there.
Shelves and I think table.
Yep, yep. So it's, it's a, it's a step up from Woodcraft and I think it's described as like a beginner series. And then we have Woodworking Two, which is a little bit more of an independent study. There's, it, the doors kicked open with what kids can do if they're real passionate about it. And then at Wright Tech, they're building a house. So that's, that's like a big jump, right? So this class could very well fit in between there where kids can do some of the beginner stuff at the high school. They like it and take this. You mentioned high-end dog houses, that's perfect, right? To get to the next level of construction and carpentry and some of all the mechanical pieces and obviously the safety pieces before they go and are building literally a house that gets sold. So we really feel like it's still going to provide an opportunity for our students to, they're real passionate about this, to do a number of kind of layered pieces in there and maybe even take this class and go to Wright Tech. Because it is not a replacement of what's going on at Wright Tech. They're, they're sheet rocking, they're wiring, they're plumbing over there to build a house. Here, garden sheds typically don't have a lot of electricity and sheet rock in them, but it is sophisticated and it takes some time. And it's a, it's a good in-between class that we feel like a student may, may be really interested in. And they've got eight semesters with us, so we want to provide another opportunity in that department where a lot of students, boys in particular, are very passionate about. So Gavin, if you want to go to the next slide, which just wraps this one up, just to kind of finish it up.
Yeah, so there's the, obviously no additional staffing is needed. I would be the one to teach it. Starting cost and materials needed would be tentatively about $2,500 for mobile tools. So Mr. Derby does the wood, wood classes that Mr. Colwell mentioned. Those are all stationary tools that are in the wood shop. Idea of this would be to simulate, you're going to a job site to do a job. So our tools need to be mobile or portable. That's what that, $2,500 tentatively is on a few different things. Then materials also. With this class, we would need, getting started, to find the money to get started with the initial build. But then we would be selling those sheds to the community or trying to sell those sheds to the community or dog houses or whatever we build. The teacher that I know at Becker said that, he's taught it for 21 years and this last year was his first year where he actually had to try to sell a shed. Otherwise, someone was asking him, hey, you're building sheds this year, you're building sheds this year. So I'm confident that our, our district and community would be kind of on the same level of need and want, so we wouldn't have to worry about the recurring materials cost going forward with it after that initial.
Home Depot's interested in partnering with us if we agree to shop at Home Depot. We've got a contact there, a guy named Royce I was communicating with. So he wanted to, just, he was curious to hear how tonight went and how this moves forward with our district because he, he, we do shop. I know a number of people in the district go to Home Depot for different supplies, custodians. I know they do at the middle school and I'm not sure how you, what you guys do, but they're very interested in supporting schools locally. And so when it says their partnerships, grants, different things, it kind of gets kicked off the ground. We have been asking and are confident we can find a way to supplement it in some way.
I have a question. Is there a way to write the curriculum so that the students could get dual credit for this, that they could take it to community college?
Yeah, talk to.
We're in the works with that. So Becca is our rigorous, our pre-intern here, and we've asked exactly that question. So she's, doesn't have an answer, but she's investigating that.
I think there's a lot of students that'd be super excited about this. I'm glad you brought it forward. Where are you thinking of doing the outside work? Obviously, it needs to be sitting somewhere for a festival to get it out.
Correct. So we have two shop doors, the wood shop on one, I don't know the door numbers, but the wood shop on the east side and then the metal shop more on the west side of the Tech Ed Department. We'd be housed out of the metal, the metal shop on the west side. There's a garage door there where we could wheel our tools in and out right through the shop door and then depending on Minnesota Springs, start framing walls inside the metal shop if we have to and then carry them outside when it's cooperable. Then there's like a little grass area, talked about pouring concrete for workstation for students there for that class.
I'll be on the north side by tennis courts is where that department is in that parking lot here.
I listed for a shed when I was teaching at Sock Rapids for nine years and I never got one, so I'm, I'm pretty excited. I hope we can get this going.
Off the list.
Absolutely.
Well, we appreciate your time. I know we want to turn over to Allison here to talk about her AP government, but we really feel like we have some kids that would appreciate these needs to Ms. Curtis's point and something that we haven't been able to offer, fill in another hole the best we can.
Thank you.
And I'll introduce Allison. Allison comes to us from De La Salle, 20-plus years of experience there, so she certainly is a veteran educator. And as we had, Social Studies Department, we were just talking a holistic picture, are we meeting the needs for learners? Which kind of led us to where we are right now.
Like Lori said, I have been teaching government for 19 years and I've taught AP Government at De La Salle High School for eight years. I have been to two classes now through the College Board to learn the curriculum. It's a great, great class. Normally at De La Salle, I would teach three year-long courses. Like, so it was a one-year and I taught three sections of that course at De La Salle. And it was highly attended. It was to all seniors. But at Monticello, we would offer it 11th and 12th grade. I see that there's a need, at least in my mind, because I'm a big government person, I think there's a need for students, when they get to the voting age, to be knowledgeable about government and the process and how it all works. And they see that, right now I teach a junior US history class and we're talking about the Civil War. I feel like I'm always talking about how the government works in order to understand how to bring the states back together after the Civil War. And I think that the ninth grade teachers do an amazing job because one, today one kid goes, oh, I know that one! And I was like clapping for him. And that was great. But there's so much more to dive into with government and it's really hard to teach 14-year-olds to love it. So I'm hoping that AP Government is that niche. There's students, I think, that would really appreciate it. There's only, I think we're only offering, we would like to offer one section of it and then see where that goes. I've, like I said, I do a project for this class where I have them create their own political parties and then they run a candidate and we end up having a debate between all the candidates. At some point, the old, my old principal wanted to, you know, do this for the entire school, so the entire school would see it. But it was a great, great project, great learning experience for the students. I know that I still am in contact with students that have participated in government and they still email me to ask me questions on how it's going in government.
So this is above and beyond the CIS US History, two course sections. This is completely another class, completely get AP credit.
This is an elective class that students choose. Again, it kind of falls under that philosophy, is it every year? Do we have enough students interested or is it in other years? So that's something that we have to really learn and monitor. We're also working very closely with Becca Kunkel, who oversees the Advanced Rigorous Course Grant to see how this aligns to that grant and those goals over the next two to three years. So there's still some unknowns, but we're working closely right there to see if we can check boxes, both from what Allison just shared, but also in our, kind of that holistic approach to our, our programming, specifically supported by the Rigorous Course Grant.
Are there other options to our level of social studies? Any other options for them?
We're a little bit thin. Our career, or our, not our, our.
Current events.
Thank you. Current events. So on, where I know that they get into conversations around politics, but in regards to this truly standard-driven content backed by the AP Board, we don't offer something like this beyond what you've talked to Ms. Curtis.
Okay, this just came to me too. So sometimes there's like the AP or CIS credit. Could there be an option for the students that maybe are not going for that credit? Like, or that don't qualify because there's restrictions?
You don't have to take the test. I think maybe, you just don't take the test. I think that's maybe the question you're intending.
Sure, yeah.
So you could take the class.
Got it.
And you could go to the curriculum, you could learn the standard, teaching and learning of it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So it'd be available in any.
I have a question about the license for the class. So does that remain with you, the teacher, or does that belong to the, the school district?
I have been approved by the, my, my syllabus has been approved by the AP College Board.
So my, my question is if you, if something tragic happened and you were not able to teach that class, would we then have to stop offering that class because you hold the AP certification?
You would, all right. You would just have somebody else in the school go take the class. It's a 30-hour, four-day, one week in the summer. I think I've been to Augsburg twice.
So I think it's maybe dual purpose. So we go through, and Cindy, you can certainly chime in here. We go through our process to get the course approved, that's what she's describing. And the instructor, she also did her end of it. So it's kind of dual roles right there. So Monticello would certainly have the course approved in our, again, our AP repository.
My understanding from charter school experiences and other situations is that CIS classes belong to the district, but AP belongs to the teacher.
AP syllabus?
Not just any teacher can do that unless they've had the 30-hour training.
The CIS courses, you have to be, you have to certain credit, major, they have to be a CIS teacher through Central Lakes or you know, guidelines. Number two for AP courses, you have to undergo some training that she talked about and well, by to take AP class. You don't have to have those extra college credit.
No, I just, I just wanted to straighten that out because, you know, if we create a class and then it, you know, something happens, you know, does it go away? Can we offer it again? Can someone else teach it? So I just think it's important to add. So I just think it's important to ask those questions when there's a certification that comes with it, so.
Thank you, Cindy.
I think it goes back to hiring too. I mean, I think it's pretty cool to see what, you know, what our principals were able to hire and give us an opportunity, number one, but then number two, I mean, obviously, good question to keep rolling so that we can continue something that I'm pretty proud of listening to you today, so give our kids a great opportunity rather than the current events, which I think, you know, is something that a lot of schools are going away from because it's, it's not as tangible and rigorous as, as a course like this to really dive deep into how our United States government works, which is what we all should be striving for as citizens.
In terms of the dual credit, they, they can take it just as a class and then just get high school credit, right? And they only get the dual credit if they take the test and score high enough, three or four.
Depending on the college that they choose to go to.
But they don't have to take the test.
I'm appreciative of the opportunity. Number one, to highlight a little bit of our staff and truly opportunities are trying to put out there for our learners. And again, I hope that you hear that foundationally, we're really trying to look comprehensively and make sure we're creating that work, that pathway for every kid. So we started over the last couple of years and we're continuing to build on that with.
I appreciate your hard work and I can tell and I can see it and my son's been through it too and he can tell the difference so far even with registration, the ease of that, knowing what he's lined up to do. And I just think it's beautiful, the career pathways that you guys have really aligned and you're making sure that we are offering everything we can to our students. So I really appreciate you, you guys continually coming with, with more to offer our kids.
Since I think that was probably the principal, it changes like that area and something, so you've done a very good job. I mean, it is as much, now the fact that you're starting already in November, it's just until March, you know, well thought out and you've done a good job with it, so thank you. I know you didn't have much of anything else. It helps when you have staff going to jump.
Career pathways is really a useful document, I think, and I hope they're passing that down to the, to the junior high, to the middle school and starting to introduce those concepts to the parents too, like when they have meetings.
So you can use that language. We're trying to find appropriate opportunities, conversations and tools that dive into the middle school as young as we're, does it look like with our sixth graders? And then how do we capitalize the next piece with seventh grade? So know that we're trying to build that foundationally so that, again, we use the language, eight, 12. Know where they're starting. We certainly don't know where they're going to end up, but that's the opportunity of what exploring our high school program will look like.
Thank you.
And then as I look in the background here with Cindy and Rachel, I think one of the things that would be really neat to bring forward is to make that connection of eighth grade to show what we were able to do at, with the eighth graders this year. And I could see you guys, yeah. And so I think that would be the next thing. I mean, there's so many amazing things that people don't know about already, always of what always into the day-in-day planning in a school district, but we are developing career pathways at the eighth grade as well with some modules in the STEM program and it's just absolutely fantastic. So if we could get Skadowski and Ms. Munson and Principals and Cindy, but just I know Cindy helped make it happen this year for the middle school. So there's just, yeah, it's some amazing connections going on that need to be made.
And connecting that to the parents, when I think about when we get the eighth graders ready to come to the high school, we go through a whole process to get them ready and to, to start to connect with the parents and say, career planning doesn't happen as a, you know, your senior year of high school. It's a process that starts, you know, basically in the eighth grader and middle. I just think that there's a lot of parents that need to hear that, okay to move all over the wheel. You know, maybe your kid will be all over the wheel in the next four years. That's right. Just to plant the idea that the process of evaluating and discarded career opportunities and directions is something that should be ongoing and an ongoing partnership with the parents in the home too, talking about it at home.
Got some special projects that are being worked on right now with that one, so.
So we have our next actual special session on non-city age one, the next one after that will be December 7th. Is that early enough for their?
Course approval? Now they'll either come on November 14th or November 21st.
Okay, but so what I'm asking is, are we going to have a special session, school board meeting for that point, talk about handbook discussion?
I mean, we can, you know, have the discussion, obviously during the work session, but I would imagine that you guys could all give me an inkling of, you know, what you're feeling, what questions you still want researched, kind of right after tonight, and that we could start to bring those, work on those so that we weren't waiting. It's something that's always in progress, just like I think we always are doing in school. You're always working on things to bring them to conclusion if they're good for kids.
If we can just get the green light to get it moving, that helps us take next steps. That really helps.
Yeah, I will offer that I was one of the ones that had some questions about the, not about the courses. I think the courses themselves are wonderful. I don't have any problem with the courses. The conversation that I think we need to have as a group is about the transition and the interrelationship with Wright Tech. And of course, the AP government class is separate and I offered that maybe we wanted to just approve that one and move on, but you know, we decided not to do that tonight. But I do think that that's something that we should have a good discussion about, is that if we're going to plan new classes that are going to dovetail in or somehow connect with or even be a replacement for the Wright Tech classes, I think we have an obligation to talk about that because we're already, you know, we already have kind of that pathway. Not that we shouldn't do it, but we should just talk about the money, where's it coming from, the, how many students right now, like the construction class? We have about 100 students that go to Wright Tech and we have 11, I think, in the construction program. I don't think we would lose those 11. The question is, you know, just having, having two classes that are very similar, especially since we talked about it earlier today, maybe offering that construction class to 10th graders so that they had 11th and 12th grade to think about Wright Tech. We just need to talk more, I think, as a group about how all of this fits into the plan for CTE with Wright Tech.
There are other school districts in the Wright Tech program that have classes too that Wright Tech also offers.
Yep. It is definitely something that we've talked about.
So I guess I'm still kind of up in the air about our actual timeframe here. So we moved the November meeting, November meeting, 7th to the 14th is our work session meeting, right? But that's what the city council, so.
We're having a meeting afterwards.
Our own special work session meeting?
Yep.
Overtime. Okay? So then we can have a discussion then, so we'll, timeframe for you still, I would say after November 14th, we'll have a decision for you about how we should move forward with this. Does that still put you in an okay timeframe?
All of our things, can you give us direction? We know you have any to go forward with. Is that okay?
I don't have a, I don't have a special meeting. We can have a special, that's just one item, I think, sensitive to help you use your handbook and incorporate. I don't think any of this is.
They don't want to feel like they're wasting time either, like.
Right, right. But my understanding is we're going to have some additional information after this week, after your meetings and things.
Okay. We hope to have an answer either way for you though.
We have a Wright Tech tomorrow, just to continue moving forward and discuss, so like potential school start times, you know, just what does that do? Brian Kazowski, the director tomorrow, these classes of, there's two districts that are meeting with him because we're both feeling the same types of things, that we have some internal things that we need to keep moving forward so that we're connecting our students to the classes that they want. We have seen a flat line for Wright Tech for decades of anywhere from 68 to 100. And so like, you know, we're talking 15 years old with that data. And so like, we're going to keep getting the same data unless we can do things like this and connect our classes to their next class and, and that's exactly what the high school's doing. So I mean, I couldn't be more excited to see where you guys can go.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. They're, they're great classes. I don't at all want to insinuate that they're not. I think they're fabulous offerings. We just have to work out all the little details, so.
Okay, move on to safety and healthy, some policies that we need to discuss.
All right, perfect. So we have first readings of the following policies. Policy 722, which is a public data request. Policy 506, student discipline. Policy 701, establishment adoption and modification of school board budget, school district budget, sorry. Policy 702, it's an accounting policy. And then policy 703, annual audit. Each of these policies was recently brought forth and updates from the Minnesota School Board Association. The policy committee has had opportunity to work through these policies with all recommended changes. All board members have had the opportunity to review the policy and your packet. Are there any questions that you wanted us to research before second reading?
What date will these come? That be the 14th also?
Nobody has questions about your first reading policies? If you do, please, Eric or someone in the policy committee, move forward. Second, look at the committee and remember.
He nailed it. Policy 208, development of policies. Policy 209, code of ethics. Policy 210, conflict of interest. Policy 410, family leave. Policy 415, mandated reporting for adults. And then policy 613, graduation requirements. Each of these policies was recently brought forth with updates from the school association and the policy committee has had time to work through these policies extensively. The entire board has previously had it at a first meeting and the last month to look at them. So at this time, are there any questions?
With 613, the policy that we pulled off and made changes that we think are okay?
And that, I mean, there's still ongoing discussions about grad requirements all the time, so at this time, I think it's good because these are mostly MSBA reflected changes. Locally, we'll continue to look at this as, as it's a, an important one to continue to look at, make sure your graduation requirements are rigorous and representing the direction our high school principals and counselors want us to go.
There's no further questions? This is the next item.
I move to approve the second reading of the policies as.
Motion made by Jennifer to approve the policies as Melissa, second, Melissa, in favor, signify.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. 7:40.
Second.
Motion made by Melissa, second, October 17th, Monticello, 32 board meeting at 7:40 PM.
Hi, I'm Smokey Bear and I made an assistant to help you out because only you can prevent wildfires.
Hey, Assistant Smokey Bear. Call me Papa Bear because I'm grilling up dinner. Do you get it?
Yes, good job.
So what should I do with all these coals?
Don't just toss them out. Put them in a metal container because those embers can start a wildfire.
I understand. The stakes are high.
Ha, 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 ha.
See, Smokey thinks I'm funny.
Severe weather can strike anytime, anywhere, but there's a simple way to stay safe. Hey, Jim Cantore here. I stay safe in dangerous weather by planning ahead. You can stay safe too with a few easy steps. Build an inexpensive kit with supplies for your family's needs. Write down important information like phone numbers and medications. Always talk with your family and remember any pets in your planning. Be ready, be safe. Start your plan today at ready.gov/plan.